This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs will come to order. Call roll, please.
Dee Perkey-Pile.
Here.
Terry McLun.
Yeah.
Trey Sellar.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Vicki Snyder.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Of six.
By standing for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I guess I wasn't the only one.
Brings us to approval of the agenda, motion to discuss.
So who?
Second.
Floor is open, changes, deletions, additions, any corrections, movements?
To the agenda?
To the agenda. Mr. Mitchell.
Could we move, since Lonnie's here and we've sat him waiting for new business, could we move him up, give him a break?
Okay, which one do you want him to move up on?
He, oh, does he have two? He's one through four, at least. Oh. Well, he's one, oh, never mind. I'm sorry, Lonnie.
I didn't pay attention. I withdraw that.
Ms. Snyder.
I would like to postpone number one under unfinished. And I would like to add a quick query and discussion of the latest tree cut situation.
Okay, let's take the first part of that. Postpone yard waste, is there a second?
Yes. Oh.
Okay. Then you want to add discussion of tree cut where?
The latest tree cuts, well, I'm assuming under new business.
It'll be number fourteen.
You're talking about power line trimming?
Yeah, if you want to call it that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is Swepco cutting down trees again?
It's not Swepco.
They're not discussing it yet. All the changes, motion to approve the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? All right, moves us into approval of the minutes for July 24, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next commission committee authority, express terms, expired terms. Before you should have an application for Mr. Joe Fitzsimmons for Parks Board, and they can get the number. It'll look kind of weird like this.
Looks like number five.
I think he is related to Ms. Pat Fitzsimmons in some form or manner.
Position five.
Yep, position number five, that's what the clerk said. For his nomination to that. So, okay.
Are you going?
I'd like to make a motion to accept his nomination.
Your second?
I can't find it.
I can, yeah, hang on.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, we'll discuss now, you want to wait till next meeting till you get time to look it over? Wait, okay, we shall wait. No other commission reports unless Bruce, is Bruce here?
Yes.
Does he want us to make a commission report, something on the agenda, I know he's got at least one or two on the agenda.
He doesn't have a report.
Okay, all right. Moves us to public comments, which I don't think we, okay, that's what I thought. Here for public comments, I don't think we have any. We do, we're about to find out. No public comments, moves us on to unfinished business, number one has been postponed, moves to number two, resolution to the wastewater lines and to Miles Museum, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell.
The attorney obviously has written a good resolution under, now therefore be it resolved, section two, does hereby resolve to begin the necessary steps if financially feasible to construct the necessary sewer line. I think that's a great way to word it and everything, I wonder if that's going, that wording is going to be enough for the hospital, I guess it just gets it started.
Which wording?
I guess that ought to get the hospital started in discussing with the city, the mayor and everything, a little more firm. I'm asking you, I guess, Tim.
The intent was to leave a little bit of wiggle room if what happened several years ago when concrete and steel both went through the ceiling, and if we wait a year to put this out, if it takes that long, and concrete and steel or whatever else is involved in putting the pipe down triples in cost, then the city probably cannot feasibly do it. And there needs to be an out, so that's the out if feasibility, if the cost just was to rocket up for some reason.
But you know, if I was allegiance, I would say, wait a minute, I could, I could have the walls up and the ground broke and the land bought, and then the cost of PVC piping for sewers triples and I'm hung out to dry, that would be a little dangerous for them.
Well.
I'm just looking at it from their angle too, it's like, whoa. Hmm, okay.
Mr. McLun.
I don't care.
Yeah, I think that the financially feasible, I mean, that's, we're going to know, well, first step of that with the bonding company, first off, and so I think once we get that, then we'll know, I think it's okay.
To start now?
Yeah, I mean, I read it as basically as just that, not looking at, you know, price increases and things like that, I mean, we'll know what that's going to be before they start. Because if, once they get started, we'll be getting it engineered, getting bids, so, you know.
I can't see them starting with that wording there, so, okay.
Oh, I don't think that, I don't think it's offensive.
Okay.
What's now?
Okay, two things, one in that regard of financially feasible, is there some way we can add, and along what lines would we be able to add, you know, like if prices skyrocket that we could work together with the hospital personnel, you know, to meet on a situation, if we can maybe word something along that line. And the second thing, I still have a major problem of only asking for construction to have begun. I don't know if I've just lived too long or what, but I've seen too many places started and then dropped and people leave. I have a problem with that.
Well, this is not a contract, this is a resolution saying that the city will move forward if it's feasible. To make them agree to do something or that they're going to participate in some way would require a contract, and I think that's the next step the council would like to see is a contract drawn up.
So this wouldn't hold us to concrete, so to speak?
No, nor can we bind them by this.
Okay, okay.
So. We're looking down the road with this, we don't, we're not going to start refinancing bonds now, are we? I mean, their contract with the present hospital has, what, eight years to go yet? I mean, we're not going to start refinancing tomorrow, are we, aren't, isn't this down the road?
It's like next year.
Yeah, okay, okay, because a lot can happen between now and next year, we may even be here next year, okay.
Mr. Mitchell.
So the resolution's an intent on this part of the city to start the negotiations towards the contract with allegiance, basically.
Yeah, okay.
I would call it a good faith offer to.
Good faith offer, okay. And then with that, I make a motion to assign resolution a number and read it.
Second.
Any further discussion on it? McLun.
Read it and approve it.
Oh, thank you.
Read it and approve it.
Read it for approval.
Read it for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
The number will be six four five, resolution number six four five, a resolution in support of construction of a new hospital, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, having been contacted by those concerned with building a new hospital in Eureka Springs, Arkansas, with regard to the availability of adequate sanitary sewer services for said facility, and whereas extending city sewer services along U.S. Highway 62 to the current proposed site appears to be financially feasible in the near future by reissuing, refinancing, and/or repaying of certain bond obligations now outstanding, and whereas the extension of city sewer services to the proposed site would be necessary to open a new hospital, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, section one, the City Council of Eureka Springs does hereby support any legal actions to further the construction of a new hospital within the corporate city limits, and, section two, does hereby resolve to begin the necessary steps, if financially feasible, to construct the necessary sewer line extension along U.S. Highway 62 when actual construction has begun for the new hospital at the proposed site.
Moves us on to number three, discussion of parking garage workshop.
Just waiting for Diane to find a date that we can all get on board with.
Okay. Any further discussion on that one?
How are we coming on that date?
Obviously not, we don't have it.
I'm sorry, I'll send that email tomorrow.
Okay. I didn't know if it started any work on it, I was just tied up, okay.
Moves this past number four to number five, which is an ordinance for rezoning old high school property from R1 to C2H.
Motion to discuss.
Second. Floor is open.
I thought we read this last week.
The ordinance, yes.
Yeah, this came from planning with their approval, I'm certain.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I would move to assign this ordinance a number and pass it on its reading for approval.
Second.
Just need a roll call, Mr. Weber, since it's a new ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's an ordinance, pass it on its first reading.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Ordinance number will be two two one six. An ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as the old high school property, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs has previously adopted planning and zoning regulation for the city, and whereas the Eureka Springs Public School District has petitioned for the property to be rezoned, and whereas the City Planning Commission has performed its duties with regard to the petition, whereas the property is adjoined by certain other properties already zoned C2H, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that, section one, certain real property at 44 Kings Highway and better described on the attached sheet, is hereby rezoned by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, from R1 Victorian Residential to C2H Commercial Historic. Section two, the planning, the city planning and zoning map shall be updated to reflect this change at its next printing. Section three, all provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are, and the same are hereby repealed, and all other provisions of the ordinances of the City of Eureka Springs not in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section four, severability, should any sentence, paragraph, clause, phrase, or section of this ordinance be adjudged or held to be unconstitutional, illegal, or invalid, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole or any part of provision thereof, other than the part so decided to be invalid, illegal, or unconstitutional, shall not affect the validity of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code as a whole.
Mr. DeWitt.
I would approve ordinance. Reading the description. It is part of the ordinance.
Okay, the description is really simple.
Okay.
All in the Freeman's edition. R1 to be rezoned to C2H, blocks 21, lots 3 and 4, block 28, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, block 29, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, block 30, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, block 31, lots 2 and 3, block 32, lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, block 33, lot 1, and part of lot 2. All streets and alleys running north, south, east, and west between the above described lots and blocks.
Mr. DeWitt.
Move to approve ordinance number two two one six on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and make a second reading tonight, so I propose to suspend the rules and place ordinance number two two one six on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Sellar?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkey-Pile?
Yes.
Mr. McLun?
Yep.
Six zero.
Did you read it?
Read it, sir.
That would be good.
Yes.
Ordinance number two two one six, an ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within the corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as the old high school property.
Okay.
Move to approve ordinance number two two one six on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Second read is done. Thank you. There's a song to, oh, our new business now. First one is a resolution.
Fixed assets.
Move everything up in here. Resolution approving a fixed asset policy for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, stand by.
What we're doing here is we're just adopting what we've been doing for, as far as I can determine, for ages, and the auditors were requesting some formal document that council had passed adopting this, and we are not able to come up with that, so this is simply a resolution to adopt what we have been doing for fixed asset purchases.
Okay, to make clear, this is, this will be an inventory of anything that we, any kind of property that we could sell to gain money from in the event that we went bankrupt or something like that, is that?
Well, actually, this is making a determination of what is a fixed asset versus something that is expensed.
Okay.
And so we have a huge list of historical fixed assets that we have, and so this just puts in a legal fore, the thing that we've been doing whenever we make the determination.
Okay, and this, on this list, then, it would include everything that can be disposed of, because there are provisions for disposing of these assets, so.
It, it does address the disposal, yes.
Okay.
And now this is just for, technically, this is just for, from here on going forward, it does not cover actually in the past, but this is the, this is what we've been following.
Okay, it would include such things as parking meters and stuff like that also?
If they met the criteria, yes.
Okay, okay.
Well, Lonnie, so that's basically, it's for balance sheet that you.
Exactly.
So you know what they are, what, what your assets are, even product by department?
Uh, for the most part, yes, we have a, like I said, we have a huge, you know, fixed asset inventory.
Sure.
And so.
And you have a list of it all right now, anyway?
Yes, we do. And so, and it does prescribe, you know, in here, whenever something is purchased, whether it's going to be expensed, you know, if it meets the criteria, or whether it's going to be deemed as a fixed asset.
Mr. Mitchell.
So, Lonnie, we've been, so the city's been doing the annual physical inventories every year so far?
We, for the most part, yes, we do that, or the department heads do that.
And they turn it into you, so you know.
Right.
And you, you verify it, somebody costs checks.
We make, we make spot checks, yes, and of course, we kind of know what's, what's coming in.
Sure.
Because we pay the, we write all the checks down there, and also, if something's donated, for instance, that has to be a value determined on that, and it has to be put on there. And of course, there's a procedure that's used, and is currently used on disposal of an asset.
Yeah, I remember that. Okay, thank you.
And that's included in this resolution also.
Further? Mr. Mitchell.
Make a motion to sign the resolution a number and.
Read with approval.
Read with approval.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on it? If not, stand by. Oh, this one we don't have, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay.
Don't we need a number?
We're going to, stand by, we've got a number and read it. Sometimes my resolution ordinance is.
Oh, I see. The resolution number will be six four six, the resolution approving a fixed asset policy for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, whereas the City Council recognizes the importance of identifying and accounting, identifying and accounting for capital items purchased and donated, and whereas the City Council believes it is in the best interest of the city to have a policy in place to give guidance for the monitoring of assets, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, to adopt the policies as attachment A. Fixed asset policy, purpose of the policy, the purpose of this policy is to identify, classify, and capitalize all fixed assets of the City of Eureka Springs, in addition to disposing of an asset of the City of Eureka Springs. Fixed asset definition, fixed assets are those assets of a long-term character which are used in the operation of the city and are intended to be held or used for an extended period of time, such as land, land improvements, buildings and improvements, vehicles, machinery and equipment, and furniture and fixtures. Currently, infrastructure assets such as street sidewalks, curbs and gutters, drainage systems, lighting systems, roads and bridges will not be recorded. A fixed asset must meet all of the following criteria, one, it is tangible in nature, two, it has a useful life of five years or longer, three, it has a value equal to or greater than $5,000. Items meeting the above criteria, criteria will be classified into one of the following categories, one, land, two, land improvements, three, building and improvements, four, vehicles, five, machinery and equipment, six, furniture and fixtures. A department head purchasing an item that meets the above criteria must obtain a fixed asset tracking form from the finance director. The form must include a description of the item purchased, date of purchase, quantity of items purchased, location where item is being stored, and any applicable serial numbers, make, model, et cetera. After completion, the fixed asset tracking form shall be filed with the finance director. Finance director will record the asset to the accounting software. Improvement versus maintenance, an improvement of a fixed asset significantly increases its value, life, or capacity to serve. An improvement is capitalized. Maintenance restores the fixed asset to its level of, original level of service, the cost of maintenance should not be capitalized. Method evaluating fixed assets, fixed assets should be accounted for at cost, or if the cost is not practically determined, at estimated cost. Donated fixed assets should be recorded at their estimated fair market value at the time received. Cost, fixed assets should be recorded at historical cost. The cost of fixed assets includes the purchase price or construction cost and all related changes to place the asset in its location or condition for use. Items otherwise meeting the definition of fixed assets but of relative immaterial cost will be charged directly at the same time in which they are acquired. This approach reduces the number of items to account for and captures the fixed assets that are material in amount. Estimated costs, the initial cost of fixed assets is available from contracts, purchase orders, ordinances, and other documents obtained through the transaction process. However, determining the historical costs after many years can be difficult, therefore, the cost will be determined by indexing current cost figures back to the estimated year in which the asset was acquired, and to record these estimate, estimated costs in the appropriate fixed assets accounts. The extent to which fixed asset costs have been estimated and the method of estimation should be disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. Disposing of an asset, when an asset is removed from the assets of the City of Eureka Springs, the disposable amount is the same as the total cost, any trade-in is not recognized, gains and losses are not recognized. When a fixed asset of original value of $5,000 or more is to be disposed of by the department head, disposed of, the department head must complete a fixed asset tracking form first and give the completed form to the finance director. At that point, the finance director, after discussion with the mayor, proceeds as follows, A, transfer the asset to another division, B, trade in the asset on a new one with the approval of the mayor, C, shall not be sold without competitive bidding if the amount exceeds $5,000. Ordinance number one six six nine nine A, passed in 1995. D, dispose of an asset if it no longer provides value to the city because the item can't be repaired or cost of repair is prohibitive with an asset value less than $5,000 with the mayor's approval. This policy will only work with adequate planning and cooperation by all departments working with the finance director and the mayor. Annual physical inventories, a physical inventory of all fixed assets will be required once a year in January in order to ensure accountability for assets of the City of Eureka Springs.
Okay, thank you. About to move us on to number two under new business, the discussion of mid-year budget review and workshop.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. McLun.
I think this one we need to get scheduled pretty quickly, it's already been bogged, and so.
Go ahead and do that before the parking. Thank you.
Any further on it? Not, we'll move on to number three, updated on city computer systems. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Lonnie?
Okay, we have all components that we purchased from the vendor, from BSNA software in place, some of the actual minor functions of the components we have not implemented at this time, we're kind of going to phase those in. Primary one is the entering of purchase orders at the department level instead of down here in the finance department, that's the big one, and that's going to take quite a, quite a lot of work to get everybody up to speed and do that. I will have to say that the computer system has been absolutely great, it's not to say that we haven't had some glitches and some issues in the implementation, but we've managed to work through most of those, well, as far as I know, all of them, and. And it's, it's really enhanced what we can do and with the way we, way we can do it. And as a matter of fact, one of the things that we had an employee leave and take another job and we just rearranged some of the duties and everything and we're not, it's not going to be necessary to replace that employee. So at any rate, that's one of the, the good features of it. One of the other things that I think is really important was the, the system has, it was expensive and they allowed us to pay it over a three-year period without any interest costs and we've only made the first payment on it at this time and so, but as far as I can tell, barring any technology changes in the future, which we don't know what that might entail, but this system should, with the upgrades that the, the company will be doing, should be good for years and years and years to come. And so, and we are constantly getting upgrades and as they tweak different parts of the system and so forth. This company has approximately 650 cities and towns that are using their software. There's four here in Arkansas, including us. And so, they have, they have really good support. All we have to do is call and they, their support departments are, and personnel are there during our working hours, so we don't have to wait till the next day or whatever. If we don't get through to someone, it's usually within 10 to 15 minutes and we have a callback. So that's, that's really a good thing and they've recently, of course, they're headquartered in Michigan, in Bath, Michigan, which I can't tell you where that is, but nevertheless, they had a user, a free user symposium or workshop and I did send Yvonne and Deena had some other commitments that she couldn't go, but they met and had, I guess, a really good training sessions and networking with other users and so forth. So it seems to be really working well from our standpoint.
Couple of questions, Lonnie. I mean, anytime you take and go as advanced with technology as the city has gone from the level that it was at first, obviously, there is a, a huge user change in how users go about stuff. It allows you to go back in and look at all your processes and everything. You obviously found that you could do with one less person in a particular area because of the efficiency of the computer system and that's great. So who is the, in the city, who is your information technology person that, that knows the whole system that, that is the point person for, for the city?
Okay, from the technical standpoint, we contract with PC Turnkey.
For the hardware stuff?
For, for the hardware and everything. And.
Software.
Probably Yvonne and I are the two that know the, the system the best.
The whole system?
Right.
Okay, and other than purchase orders, is there anything else that has not gone online that was still bought, like business licenses or anything, or is that all done too?
That's all been, that's all been done.
Has it?
And like I mentioned, one of the little glitches that we had was with the business licensing, it has to coordinate with the building department. And those two were not talking to each other and so forth, and so we had to work around that and, and get that where when the building inspector, you know, does his job and everything, then the business license can be issued and so forth.
Thank you.
Court clerk.
Lonnie, we have a maintenance agreement with this company?
Uh.
Annual maintenance?
Well, our maintenance is included for this three-year period.
Yeah, for three years, okay. Do they, are they going to help you with that, that fix there between building and business licenses?
Well, we've, we are, we have already taken care of.
You have your context on that? Okay.
Well, I see the clerk is, is disagreeing, but they, anytime we have had a problem, we have, we have called them and they have assisted us with writing an additional program or whatever to make it compatible. So, yes, they are very, very helpful.
So it is compatible and is working now? The business, the, the building inspector and the, and the business license is working?
It, it, it is working, yes.
Okay.
Just a question on that matter specifically. I mean, is it, is it, we sell the one, the clerk sells the license and then the building inspector should be able to look at the list of licenses? Is that what's not working or I don't understand?
Well, we, we worked around where the court, the coordination between the building inspector and the person issuing the license is done outside the system. And all it took was just a little bit of understanding of who did what when.
Oh, sorry, what was that last part?
Little bit of understanding who, who did what, when, whatever.
Thank you.
So, so the, the building permits or the, the licensing is not a part of the system then?
The issuing of the business license issues.
Is, just the.
And see, the, the, the building inspector has to do certain things before, or supposed to, before the license is issued on a, on a new business at least. Inspect the property and premises and so on and so forth.
So if, if the form is started in one office and the other, the other can't pull it up and, and then complete it or whatever?
I, uh, they, they can look at the different. I don't know that they can actually make changes to it because there are restrictions on who can use and who can do it.
Mr. Mitchell?
Ms. Armstrong, would you, would you, would you give us a little clarification there on that, on that particular issue, please?
Uh, I could give you a capsule report striving for minimal damage. When the system was purchased, it was a really good move to create a module for the building inspector to be able to prepare the background for issuing the licenses for which he's responsible. Of the 830 or so licenses that are issued per year, maybe a quarter to a third of them, rough estimate, go through the building inspector's office. The balance goes through the city clerk treasurer's office. No module was incorporated for the city clerk treasurer to handle the portion for which that person is responsible. I pointed that out early in the process, met with great resistance, waited to see if it would change. It did not. Again, striving to create minimal chaos here. The system of checks and balances that is designed to have a city of the first class operate properly is hindered by virtue of the fact that every single thing the city clerk treasurer does goes through the finance department, which is the mayor's bailiwick. So the city clerk treasurer does not have access to the most basic information regarding business licenses. When somebody calls me and says, may I please have a list of all the new businesses that got licenses in 2014? Say, well, yes, I will ask someone in the finance department to do that for you. So even the simplest questions, I cannot answer. That might be okay if there were, and I'm, I'm going to step very delicately here, an open line of communication between the person who does the accounts receivable and who actually physically generates the business licenses. Unfortunately, that has been very, very difficult. And I have made every effort to professionally and with great patience help that situation become clear and reestablish the checks and balances system that we are supposed to be using and have been prevented repeatedly and vehemently from doing so. And that's all I want to say in public on camera.
Ms. Snyder?
Keeping in mind I'm computer illiterate, I'm thoroughly confused. I thought our new system was supposed to make everything accessible to everybody. Like I said, I'm computer illiterate, so take that into, into course. In other words, one of the girls, one of the offices needed something they can tap into your stuff or something, or if you needed something from them. I thought everybody was supposed to be able to access everything.
No.
Okay, like I said, I'm computer illiterate. This is what I, this is what I'm asking. Or the vast majority of certain things I would assume would have to be, well, not so much private as eyes only, I don't know. I, I don't understand why.
You have some question or just making statement?
I'm, I don't understand.
Ask him.
Well, I'm asking anybody who can answer, I'm confused. Okay, for instance, I needed a contract that we had with Carol Boone. So I called one office and I was told, well, no, it would probably be in accounting, which didn't make any sense. And I checked with the mayor's office and they couldn't find the, the part I was looking for. And I went through three or four different places, including the clerk, and nobody had anything. I finally got what I was looking for from Carol Boone, who at first didn't, they couldn't find it. But I mean, this is what I mean, I thought something like that, especially a written contract, there'd be a copy or there'd be something accessible by almost anybody in city. This is what I'm saying, I don't, you should see my computer, no, you shouldn't.
Well, that, that, that particular issue, a contract, would not be in the accounting system.
Right.
It would be, it would be a physical document in a, signed and so forth, in a file somewhere.
It wouldn't have been copied into the records somewhere?
Not, not, not in the accounting.
Well, I mean, anywhere that someone could access.
Not in the accounting system.
Okay, so I, I figured there would be a, a, a physical thing, but that's what I'm saying. I thought part of this new system was so that we could take all these records, copy them and they'd be recorded.
No.
No, that, that's, that's a, a different thing that, and of course, there is a gentleman that's photoc, or copying or scanning all the documents and the old documents of the city and everything and he's, but he, as far as I know, would not be, it's more of ordinances and resolutions and that's.
Who would keep these records? I would assume either the clerk or the mayor's office.
Let's go back to, yeah, let's.
Well, it kind of ties.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
We're getting off track here. Mr. Mitchell, you have comments here?
Lonnie, based on what the clerk said and everything, you standing there, could you tell us what it would take to get the licenses back with, with, with the issue there? Is that solvable or is it not?
Well, that, that is the way the system has always been as far as I, as I know. It's, it's, as far as the accessibility and everything, nothing like that has changed. With the exception of the department heads can, can go in and look at, at some of their records. They can't change a lot of them, but they can go in and, and look at them. But nothing as far as people having access and so forth was changed from any of the other systems.
Ms. Eller?
Uh, our, okay, I've, I've heard, and I, I think I understand what Ann is saying here, is, are the, all of the business licenses for the city, those that do not go through the building inspector, but the other business licenses, are they not on computer and not accessible to the city clerk?
Uh, they are prepared on the computer by the clerk at the, at the front desk up there and that's the way they've been done ever since I've been here.
And they're, and she can't draw this information up on her computer to check it or there's no search ability?
I don't know what she, I don't, I don't know what she can do on her computer, quite frankly.
Well, if this is a problem, are there plans to address it or understand it or fix it? I mean, what, um, I don't understand what's going on here. I mean, I don't understand. She doesn't have access to information she needs and I don't understand why, if this is a really super duper computer system.
Well, this, I don't, if this really has anything to do with the system.